She was like, she slid up.
The only thing that came was that they're trying to sort of get in front of her.
Now.
I like all that six, seven, six.
He out on.
So they.
They are.
Good training. Not much.
She used. Yeah.
Virginia.
Kim and Kim.
Okay. Virginia, Virginia. Brandon. The next one's. George go. Wait right there.
Yeah. Please go to your passport.
Just don't care my mom.
They could just find you.
That's probably what I'm saying. Probably.
That's wrong.
You need to start.
I'm in Devon. Yeah, yeah.
Some of them will. Against the.
This. I think you're.
Oh, no. I think it's. I think it's.
Look bigger than that.
I've seen it. I have.
I do. Well, as he is.
I go up.
That's what I say.
It's the way I'm. Let's get it here. Y'all need one?
I got some. Where's the townie at? I ain't hardly seen it.
Two.
He's driving.
Old Grand Lake. Land. I believe. I believe. He's just us. We didn't get one more time.
Rule. We got all that. We got all. We got it. Hey. Clint's back. Missed it before, I think.
We have.
It's been a while.
Men's. I ain't doing a question.
Good. Take one of them. I have to go.
Other than.
They have. We leave you out. I don't have good things. Good night.
I know. Morning. I was. It's not.
He's got cold. He's got cold. He goes, Markwell, he's had to.
Get everybody out of there. We had a mad week making this. Bad thing.
Mayor from town, our Mr.
Yes.
Good morning, Senator Clacko, and welcome everybody to the Board of Supervisors meeting this morning. At this time, we have a prayer of a brother Wayne.
Tell us, pray. My most precious family, Father, dear God, we thank for this opportunity to come before you to conduct the business of the county. Father, we pray that you'll be with us in all the things that we say and do. Father, we pray that we'll reveal your nature in them. We ask you to forgive us for our sins and shortcomings, and we ask this in your son's holy and precious name. Amen.
Amen. Would please remain standing. Mr. Dixon, would you please stand and lead us in the prayers, please, sir?
Stand attention. Salute. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with everything and justice for all.
All right. First of all, the business, uh, through the minutes for November. A motion by Brandon, talking about Dan, all in favor? First, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor? Uh, the next thing on the agenda, we will recognize a resolution for Mr. Red Grant.
Come on, Red. Get him on, Henry.
Before I go. Rock sand, you pick, Red. Big. No light, Chris.
They're waiting there.
They're not there. While you're standing there, you can call me.
County of Simpson County, resolution. A resolution honoring and recognizing the public service of James Roy Red Grant Jr. of Parisville, Mississippi, upon his retirement for his many years of outstanding service of public works, needs of the citizens of Simpson County. Whereas it is a sense of Simpson County Board of Supervisors to honor and recognize those employees and officials who devote themselves to public service, demonstrating great diligence and dedication to providing for the public work of the past for the citizens of Simpson County. And whereas public works are vital to the citizens of local government, roads, bridges, emergency, and other operations within every county of the state of Mississippi. There are certain individuals who by virtue of their commitment and dedication, command and respects and admiration of their community for their explanatory contributions and service to the county and citizens. And whereas James Roy Red Grant Jr. has served as a parish position of family as road department equipment operator of the Simpson County Road Department full-time from September fourteenth nineteen ninety-two through November the thirtieth twenty twenty-three. And now therefore be resolved by the Board of Supervisors, County of Simpson, State of Mississippi, that we do hereby commend salute and show our respect for and offer our most sincere gratitude to James Roy Red Grant Jr. for his many years of service. To the citizens of the County of Simpson County, the State of Mississippi, adopted by the Simpson County Board of Supervisors, just the fourth day of December in the year of our Lord two thousand and twenty-three. Congratulations.
How many, how many years, Red?
Thirty this time.
Thirty?
This time.
He's worked several. Seventy first time. You can get your picture too. It's good for women.
I like.
But it's. Put you back there.
You want something, you like. See?
Getting closer all the time.
Yeah. Told him you like it, what? You getting told.
Come on, move to this and two.
You got any prayer? We'll take the. Prayer ready? Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
I did want to thank Mr. Grant. At this time, Mr. Dixon, you guys come out.
Yes, we have a, uh, two proposals for collection agents for a justice court. Currently, we're using Mississippi Court Solutions. They've offered a twenty percent flat fee on their, uh, collections. And we also have a, a proposal from Southern Financial Systems, and they have their proposals for a twenty percent flat fee. So, uh, do each of you want to stand up and say something?
You are doing.
Okay. Y'all can stand by curious on me. That's it, that's okay. My name's Tim Colvin, I'm with Mississippi Court Collections, and, uh, and we've had the pleasure of serving Simpson County for over twenty years. Um, when we first started, you guys had the small office building in front of your sheriffs and justice court complex before that was even a thought. Uh, we worked with Kim Jackson before she retired, and now we're working really well with, uh, with Joyce Hicks, your justice court clerk. Um, during those twenty years, uh, we collected over six million dollars from Simpson County, and we had collected fifty-six percent of that that's been monetary, and we have retired sixty-eight percent of the cases that have been handed over to us. That's a good success rate for what we've done. Um, we have, uh, as Mr. Dixon told us, we do. Let me get that. Come on, little guy. Uh, we, we're going, uh, suggesting a four-year term that's coincides with the term of the board at twenty percent flat. That twenty percent of the public fees collected go to end state and out of state. Um, that equates to the penalty of twenty-five percent if we were just stacking that on. Um. And really, uh, that's basically it. We've done well, we've been successful, we've been efficient, we've done a good job for the county, and, uh, Justice Court Clerk, George San Nick, has endorsed us, uh, through the name. So if you have any questions, I'd be more happy to answer those at this time. I'll just be seated unless you have something else. Thank you. Do you want to stand up and present?
Yes.
Southern financial.
Okay, good morning. Um, my name's Kimberly Fair. This is my husband, Kim Fair. He was an Oldfield guy, but retired, and now he's helping me, which has been a lot of help. Um, I pretty much, what he said, we've got a great success rate. I've been a business for over twenty-five years. I do a lot of the counties around here. I've got statistics, and I know y'all have a lot to cover, so I've got the email addresses on just how much I've collected from a lot of the counties that we collect for. So we've been very successful as well. Um, I think that probably the biggest difference, because everything he said, we do the same thing. Um, any collection agency is going to tell you, you ask them, how do you collect money? Okay, I'm going to send letters. Okay? We all have to send letters, all collection agencies have to buy by FDCPA, they're dead collection practice. So you send letters. Well, a lot of people throw those letters away. You make phone calls. Okay, a lot of people don't answer phones, especially if they know it's a collection agency, they don't answer phone. So what do you do next? And this is where the difference comes in, because otherwise, that's your only avenue to collect. However, there's already a judgment on these fines for either failing to appear or for actually the judge sets arrangements they never pay. So I pay for garnishments out of my pocket. Garnishments are, I mean, that is the best way to do it, to collect. That's where most of my money comes from now. Very few people voluntarily pay. And, uh, the garnishment's a great avenue. They've moved out of state, out of county. The fines never go out of statute. So, I mean, we have to get in line sometimes, but by paying that, I mean, that's the fifty-five dollars that is not costing the county anything. If they die, I mean, sometimes that happens, we lose that money. You don't. Um, the twenty percent, I mean, that it costs the county absolutely nothing. Even if you could put people in jail nowadays, and you can't, you can hardly suspend license, that does nothing to help the county. I mean, that just costs them. So I think that that's the big difference in my agency and other agencies, because nobody else files garnishments and pays for them. Uh, most, if they did, they'd want the county to pay for them. So, uh, that's pretty much. If y'all have any questions for me, um, I, I don't know, I can probably say just about, because if we do the same thing and we'd have the same percentage, and I'm just the best.
Well, Kim, uh, what'd you say down in your company here?
Southern Financial Systems.
Southern.
Yes, sir.
And you're saying, why shouldn't we go with you? You telling us, why should we choose you over them, and we have them?
Excuse me?
You saying, why shouldn't we choose you over them?
Right, why? Well, I would say that the way to collect money now is through garnishments. I mean, I do a lot of civil, I do criminal, I do, I mean, that's just, people just don't want to pay nowadays. I mean, if they're gonna pay, they're gonna pay off the level. But I mean, if everyone doesn't know they can't go to jail, if they're not scared of going to jail, you know, they're not worried about our letters. So by taking the garnish, taking it through a garnishment, then, you know, and you don't have to worry about if they're out of state or out of town, out of county.
But you're saying you are willing to absorb the garnish.
Right, I'm the one that pays for it. You know, I think I, I bet, I just got, and I, I had a couple of, um, clients. I've had, uh, Tunica County since April, and I've already collected forty-five thousand dollars for them. Um, Jones County, I've had them for a while, he said he's had y'all twenty years. We've returned, I mean, over a million dollars to them. And I, all this, I'm going to leave y'all a proposal, one of my proposals, because I've got a lot of references. I mean, I do most of the counties around here. Um, so, you know, I've had, I've had Hancock County for like four months, and I've already collected thirty-three thousand dollars for them. But it's coming in garnishment money. I mean, that's really, that's the only thing you've got, if letters and phone calls don't work.
Do you, uh, use the references?
There's, I've, there are, I've got a lot of references, because I do banks, I mean, I do a lot more than just counties.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We take into consideration.
Sheriff, you got any recommendations on which one you'd like to see over there?
Ain't, ain't, ain't my baby. I, I just pick them up when they don't think.
Thank you.
But House Bill five eighty-five has made it hard for everybody to try to collect, to get a hundred dollars a day for sitting there.
That's all, uh, I kind of interview Mr. Buddy Woodson.
You want to take that under advisement?
Yeah.
Fifteen?
You say. Motion by, uh, Brandon. Talking by Danny. Discussion? All in favor? Mr. Woodson.
That's it. Where they come to you. Not today. You're going to be there. What's up?
He's in crime.
Oh, yeah. He's in court. Gives a video, man. Guess that they didn't like. All right. Status of state aid, LSVP county projects, SAP sixty-four, sixty-four grade, ground basin service, star grass and road, about ninety-five percent complete, ninety-eight percent lap time. I request the final inspection. State aids want to see a little more grass on it before they.
Younger's bit of grass, told everybody, there's one driveway that we need to cut a ditch off of it or something, because it's going to work the road out. Add a drive, you know.
Okay, come in, yeah.
And the water coming out and going right down.
Right down the edges of.
And it's already. It already doesn't knock some of the. What?
That's too long.
What'd you say?
Right, it's like thirty, thirty.
But anyway, yeah.
Make sure you look at that. Want to try to get that, don't forget.
Yeah, that needs some attention. Yeah, coming off that, it's riding, it's coming down the edge of the plate. So I'm going to get up on the plate and say.
Buddy, on, on that and Shore Road, you know, when, when they done this work, it's all more dry.
Yeah.
Dry, dry, dry. And the compaction on those edges and those shoulders just wasn't very good, because you can't pack dust.
That's right.
But now that we've got a little moisture in there, we may want to look at repacking that.
Well, I mean, it would be whatever punch list items, I think state aid wants to do, but, because they're going to argue they met density at the time, but, yeah, whatever state aid.
Well, like I said, you can't pack dust. And that's all they have, when they were.
Oh, yeah.
Doing that with dust.
It, it was difficult, you know, it's like, when it's wet, it's difficult, when it's dry, it's difficult in a different way.
That's right.
But, yeah, once state aid does, uh, an inspection on it, they basically say, here's what they, they have to have paid it, so. Uh, but I'll talk to the Bush about that, and we'll, you know, make sure to look at that. So, yeah, Shore Road, LSVP sixty-four twenty-four, basically the same thing, waiting, he's wanting a little more grass, and I think contractors got rid of those rip rap checks and getting the cell fence out and everything. So, uh, actually, I think he's up there looking at those today to see if he'll be able to find them. Um, and then he'll scud the rest later on. SAP sixty-four sixty-five, bridge replacement on Dry Creek will readvertise first of the year, anticipate probably in March with the open. Uh, LSVP sixty-four twenty-five, Pecot Road mailed PSNSN to the state aid, October thirty-first, but will advertise late December. Bush is about ready to advertise that, and so we should start December advertising. Uh, ERVR, um, sixty-four oh three, bridge replacement on Saratoga Shering, uh, ninety-eight percent complete, ninety-eight percent lap time. Contractors proved the bridge paved to approach his waiting growth, the grass, and policemen punch list items. There's some routing handles to be on the bridge units. Once he does that, I think we're ready to close that one out. Uh, SAP sixty-four seventeen M, guard rail on Old River Road awaiting contracts back from contractor. And then the ERVR sixty-four oh five, bridge rehabilitation on U-Hope Road, completing plans, anticipating advertising, uh, this month in December. Now, on, uh, on that ERVR sixty-four oh five, uh, we had to do G O T and boring and things like that to meet the requirements. I've got an invoice here from, I did with G O T. And then backing up on the ERVR sixty-four oh three, Saratoga Shering, this is the testing invoice, all testing, right?
Hey, we got about, how much was that, fifty thousand dollar plus or minus on that? On the ERVR number five? Eric, you remember how much that check was? Forty-eight thousand. So we need to come in. That's the first check. The way they do that is they send you a preliminary check for some percentage, and then once you turn in the bid. Then they cut the rest of it, and if something ends up costing more, we have to take the error, so. You get two checks, that's it, so.
They changed.
They changed the way that it's done since the first go around was in there. Just be aware.
All right, and I've got a, uh, utility agreement here from AT&T that's on Emmett Brown and AD and the London Road, and I'm believing that's going to be which dimes.
Everything good on?
It looks good to me.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Brandon? Oh, no.
That's what we do instead. Uh, I'll make a utility agreement.
On the utility agreement, he said everything was in check, so.
Yeah, they, they got all the notes that we wanted to hang out.
We, we doing them as status report or?
We just, what do you feel then?
Exactly.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Both in on the status report.
All right. Motion by Brandon, talking by Danny. Any discussion? All in favor?
Everybody have a good day. Just saying. Oh, buddy. Probably have some damage, maybe, no. Okay. I got some damage on the air. Okay, no problem. If you find out, it's amazing. You know, y'all have a good day.
Thank you. Next, I'm giving, uh, just quick, Mr. Tim Gray, he's up.
He's not here, Mr. Danny has a proof. You have that proof of publication?
Tim Gray.
Tim Gray acknowledging your minutes, the, uh, proof of publication on the hour before.
So, my move, say. A motion by Brandon, talking by Danny. Any discussion? All in favor? Next. And all you got, Mr. Woodson? Yes. Mr. Jamie Brew with text.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have surrender tags for November.
Motion? Motion. Check. Motion by Danny, talking by Brandon. Discussion? Pass.
And I have, um, various changes to the real personal and homestead role for twenty twenty-three. This is when people come in and they forgot to file homestead and stuff like that, so.
Motion by Brandon, second by Danny. Any discussion?
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Woodson. Number five, Sheriff Paul Martin.
Five, President, board member president. Uh, I'm going to kind of skip around, we'll take these personnel items up together, but personally, again, some food services, November invoice, twenty thousand four hundred thirty-nine twenty-two cents.
Pass. Motion by Danny, second by Brandon. Discussion? Pass.
Next on the National Sheriff's Association, twenty-four, due use cost one forty-two.
Pass. Motion by Danny. Talking by Ren. Any discussion? Pass.
Number four, Michelle Cock and Angie Walker, dispatch to ten, never secure, always ready class, December the fifth, twenty-three. At Floable, also Crystal's car and Angie Walker, ten, building relationships class, the sixth of December. At Floable, total cost of all three of the ten class, three hundred dollars.
Motion by Danny. Talking by Ren. Any discussion? Pass.
Number seven, Casey Banks and dispatch to ten, AI, I A E D forty-hour class, train to January the fifth through the nineteenth at Jackson Police Department, no charge to the class.
Motion by Danny. Second by Ren. Any discussion? Pass. Next.
Number eleven, Mitch, you paid USPCA invoices amount of fifty dollars.
Motion by Ren. Second by Danny. Any discussion? Pass.
Three, Fletcher Trash, sheriff deputy, new hire, full-time certified, eighteen seventy. Jack, let's, y'all take them all up. All right, Jacqueline Horn, dispatch, full-time certified, fourteen, moved to part-time, thirteen seventy-five. Tiffany Ruggen, dispatch, full-time certified, fourteen forty, moved to part-time certified, thirteen seventy-five. Dwight Robinson, new hire, M doc trash detail, thirteen seventy-five. Rebecca Hubbard, jail, new hire, part-time non-certified, eleven ninety. Mary Brown, jail, new hire, part-time non-certified, eleven ninety. Doug Patrick, moved from full-time non-certified, fifteen fifty, to full-time certified, eighteen seventy. Jeff Mann, full-time non-certified, fourteen eighty-five, moved to full-time certified, eighteen seventy.
Motion by Danny. I'll second. Second by Ren. Any discussion? Thank you, Mr. Sheriff.
Thank you, sir.
Next on the agenda, six, Mr. John Kilpatrick, the greatest of many.
Thank you, Lord. Biggest thing I have, or the only thing I have, is, uh, to prove me the pocket E N P G grant.
Motion by Danny. Second by Ren. Any discussion? Go ahead.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Kilpatrick. Uh, number seven, uh, county municipal, Mr. Roy Dickerson.
All right, good morning, members of the board. The first item on the agenda is. To it. I'm moving pretty quick. Give the sheriff. I'll share stuff.
Double book. Take the word.
I have another one, but.
Not fair, I won't be taking it.
First item on the agenda is to adopt an order to approve the plane document, December fourth, two thousand twenty-three, in the amount of six hundred thirty-nine thousand, four hundred thirty-five dollars and fifty-sixty-six cents.
So move. Motion by Danny. Second by Ren. Any discussion? Pass.
All right. Next item, Charlie Wells, update on the parish projects.
Thank you, Mr. President, to the board. Um, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Tim Gray for using his fees to purchase these chairs, they're nice, uh.
Mr. We didn't thank him for all the files.
The, uh, me and Mr. Roy attended the Simpson City Plane Development Meeting, um, where they want to, um, develop safe streets and roads, um, for all. Basically, it's just to significantly reduce and eliminate injuries in, um, Simpson County. They identified two major things that caused accidents or injuries or deaths was left turns and falling off roadway edges. Uh, so that's two things Simpson County they were identifying. They, uh, it is a grand opportunity filming up in US Department of Transportation, federal highway administration. The Central Mississippi Plane Development is currently in the visioning phase, where they're getting, um, maps, all the data, and public input information. But with from February twenty twenty-four to April twenty-four, uh, they'll start evaluating all the public information, and then they will start awarding grants, um, for different counties throughout the state that will help improve safety in our road systems. Uh, next thing, trustee Hall, uh, today.
Yeah, let me. You, what'd you say about layup turn?
So they identified two major things in Simpson County that were the majority causing cracks. One was left turns and slipping off of roads.
Well, I, I could see the slipping off the road, but where are they getting that by left turn?
That, that was their identity. We're the only one out of the seven counties that was a left turn.
Left and right, it was.
I think it's just that there's, we have so many crossings on Highway forty-nine, probably turning, crossing the highway, turn left is a, a dangerous thing, and that's part of the problem. They, I was going to make.
Be anywhere. You accounted how many crossovers it's home. Running woods, though. That odd?
It's quite a few. But they're asking for problems in the county as well, and to me, I, and I responded, Charlie's on there, he saw my response and work. To me, the, uh, intersection there at, uh, Valley Hoop was at, uh, used. was at the views of downhill road, is one of the worst problems we have because of the immense amount of school traffic from the academy and then the road department and Air South all pulling in, and if they build a consolidated hospital at some point, it's gonna be way worse. There needs to be a frontage road extended on that northbound side, going south to the top of that next hill, so the E traffic can go down there to turn left, and one extending on up to Air South, so that that traffic can be handled on that northbound side. Albert White's aware of that, but to me, that's one of the worst problems that we have.
But you have an opportunity, if you want the link, you can identify any area in the county, it's not limited to just forty nine. It's a survey that I can see, and you can go through it, and it has a map that you can go on, you can crowdsource it, and you can identify areas within the county that you think the public can do it. It's not limited to just the city board or the county employees. Anybody can identify areas, and they can utilize those, start studying those areas and see what can be, how it ranks within the seven counties.
I'm gonna tell you, the workplace we have on forty nine, and then on this end would be five forty, at Tuckin. They, that area, if they're trying to get a petition up to make a frontage road to come out and go down, because I'm still in the Farm Bureau, and they petitioned to get there. They hadn't made any progress. And then the next one would be down at Valley Hoop, I mean, not Valley Hoop, J J's Shale, where you pull out down that bumper, a lot of people get rear ended right there, because they just pull out and people coming through, that's, that's what made it.
And they go that.
I mean, they paved that road.
The G side on the road is the big. There's several bad crossings, but they, they both have planes probably on it. But they just, anything that requires them to acquire right away, they restrict on right now, and so they, M dot has some limitations, is what's been put on that at the moment. I would encourage you to respond to that survey and.
Just go in there.
Well, I'll send you the link, and I'll even post it on Facebook if the public wants to make comments about it.
Because, you know, we're thinking about Highway forty nine, but the other thing that occurs in the county.
I've been listening to you just.
Just Highway forty nine.
I've been saying before, Tom asked me how to get a hold of, how do you get a hold of, you know, something, if you have a problem, they think that's a good thing.
There's a big pot of grant money that the federal government has put out for all the states, and it's, it's gonna be handled on a regional approach. So we, all of our member counties in the Central Mississippi Plan Development District will get just paid by going through them, so we need to take advantage of that opportunity.
All right. Next thing is, I'm trustee Hall today, I'm doing the final inspection with the architects. I've got trustees moving in this weekend, the plaque that we discussed in production. And just a reminder, that was a six hundred and ninety two thousand dollar awkward funded project. We should have, by being on site daily and fixing some issues, we should have about thirty three thousand in repaying fees we'll get back, we haven't had to use any of that stuff. The courthouse, the blinds are ordered, they're about four weeks out. My intentions are to have those installed prior to the January twenty seventh bicentennial celebration, so that everything is in clean, working order. I do have one issue, we have four leaks on the roof. I've been in constant contact with the architect, and they are having the contractor return and see if they can figure out where the leaky is, but we just spent a lot of money on that to have four leaks, it's hard. So we'll stay on top of that and make sure that is rectified.
Because they got their left payment?
No, we will, that will not happen until we are all happy. And again, also, with that, when that plaque is in production. A few more, getting back, I was put on the contact for the broadband expansion of the beam, I kind of just went through a little bit of updates with it. The draft two volume, which is basically public input ended December the first, what it does is identifies underserved or poor served areas for broadband internet. This is another grant opportunity of one point two million dollars. They identified Simpson County of being about twenty percent underserved, so that's either one, how they called and got their information, or since it was also a, kind of like the Central Mississippi Plan Development, a crowdsourcing public comment, where you go in and you identify that you've got poor service, I don't know exactly how accurate that twenty percent underserved is, but they identified Simpson County being around twenty percent underserved. But the next phase is to identify the areas and start evaluating grant opportunities to issue out for underserved.
Coach Charlie, who are they? Who are the beams?
So can we get our own local committee?
What we need to do, since that volume two, which is their project, is basically a public comment period, they transition into December the first, we will start transitioning to the next, I will see where we are on the next phase, and see if they're still open to public comment on it. I'm sure they are, and we'll start, if there's a committee.
And they identified, I mean, you said twenty percent, but areas, where is the most areas that is underserved?
They got, I'll send you a link, they got a map identified where those areas are. It's, it definitely is away from corridor, main highway corridor.
Thank you. I'm more rural.
It is, yes, that's what, that's what being is for, is for rural.
Rural it is, probably, that's what.
That's right. But I can see that link along with the survey, as you can have it if you're discretion, if you want to look at it.
But that's an example of that, what you're talking about, twenty percent, is, I know the kind of internet service I have, probably call ads too, it's pitiful, but they consider that we have adequate access compared to those areas that have virtually none.
And that falls in that.
I don't agree with that, probably neither, but that's what they determined.
You'd have to put in a whole day, because day ain't never been out here. Well, even with that steaming down, you had the satellites and them kind of things.
Past couple of years, they've been working on this, trying to figure out where they're gonna focus on, so.
Okay, but that's all again, Mr. Dan.
All right, thank you, Charlie. We've already had a number three on my agenda and number four on my agenda, so the next item will be number five, to approve the request to extend the M V E Q solid waste assistant grant number S W one two seven eight, seventeen thousand five hundred and eighty five dollars, which was expiring at twelve thirty one of twenty thirty, or one more year until twelve thirty one twenty four.
I'll make that motion. Motion by myself, second by Danny, in a discussion? All in favor?
Item number six is to approve the renewal of the rapid gas alert system with high ground solutions for two thousand twenty four, four thousand dollars, seconds later.
Motion by Danny? Second by Randy, in a discussion?
Item number seven is to approve the lowest quotation we had of Trustmark Bank at five point one eight percent for the one yearly purchase of a two thousand twenty four Kenworth dump truck from Truck Works, total amount of at least two hundred seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars. The other quotes were from Keynes Bank, five point seven eight, and Peoples Bank at six point two seven.
Motion by Randy? Second by Danny, in a discussion?
Yeah, I see they have on the truck, though.
Yes, that was, in our last year, it was two oh five. That's right, and they had a, each year model, they had a deal built into their bid price that they would go up a certain percentage on, on the trucks. That was in our, our bid, though. But this is the last truck of those six trucks that we authorize buying, so for next year, the new board's gonna have to decide what they want to do in terms of buying dump trucks.
We've kind of locked into the deal. Let me clear it up.
All in favor?
Item number eight is to approve the constable's request for payment for the four thousand five hundred dollar fee each for cases where the state has failed in its prosecution for both Constable Brown and Christopher Johnson.
Motion by Randy? Second by Danny, in a discussion?
Yeah, kind of explain, I want, what was the state on?
Well, that's a statutory fee that the law allows constables to receive when they have done servicing criminal issues where the state, whoever it was, was a judge, innocent or not guilty or whatever, where the state failed in its effort to prosecute.
Oh, okay, so it's just.
It gets them, it's supposed to cover their costs for, for those cases where the defendant is guilty or not guilty.
Okay, okay.
And it's, it's increased dramatically. It used to be like thousand, and then it was fifteen hundred, and then it was twenty five hundred, and now it's four hundred a year.
I just.
Just a reminder of.
The state failed, if it more failed, they didn't get them, they didn't beat Robin.
Didn't beat him. And just as a reminder, to you too especially, is in January, constables will come to you and ask you to pay state retirement on their fee income, and we have been doing that for this term, and you have to ask for it in you every term, so Randall, the constables are aware of this, and they'll, they'll ask you about it.
All in favor?
Item number nine is to approve the renewal of membership of the National Association of Kings, two thousand twenty four, for five hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion by Danny? Second by Randy, in a discussion?
All right. Number ten is to authorize Pickles Bank and the sheriff's office to close all previous sheriff's accounts to be paid to the County General Fund or the Canton F, Canton Team Fund, depending on where it needs to go.
Motion by Randy? Second by Danny, in a discussion on this?
All right. Number eleven is to authorize the letter to Pickles Bank to open new accounts for Whitford Berry Circle for use beginning January one, two thousand twenty four.
Motion by Danny? Second by Randy, in a discussion?
Okay.
All right. Number twelve is to approve the, excuse me, we're gonna skip number twelve, don't have anything there. I do have some invoices that came in, we're going to have to approve. Number thirteen is to approve applicable travel registration mileage expenses for Mitchell Chapman, District One Supervisor, to attend the Mississippi Association Supervisors Minority Caucus New Term Orientation, December fifth, that's tomorrow.
Motion by Danny, second by myself, in a discussion? All in favor? Question, oh, yeah, why? Question why?
Wasn't no question I opposed.
But I'm, I'm asking why?
But I don't like it.
You don't like it?
Okay.
That's your choice.
The motion does pass.
Well, I was, I was gonna take care of myself, but it didn't.
All right. Number fourteen, we have approved the payment on the E R B R six four oh five, Dew Hook Road Bridge Project, our testing, two thousand nine hundred twenty two dollars and sixty cents.
Motion by Danny? Second by Randy, in a discussion?
Okay.
All right, we also have the motion to approve the invoice for E R B R six four oh three Saratoga sharing road, our testing services, two thousand eight hundred eighty dollars and seventy five cents.
Motion by Randy, second by Randy, in a discussion?
Okay.
All right, and the next item, we have an invoice to the E General Hospitals and the workers' comp expense, a hundred and seventy seven dollars, James Coleman.
Motion by Randy, second by Danny, in a discussion?
Okay.
All right. Also have one item that wasn't on the agenda, I wouldn't do that while I hadn't, wanted to get about it. Justice Fort Clerk, Ross Hicks, has requested to hire Mary Walker, full time, and her to be a new deputy clerk in the Justice Clerk office, to replace somebody that quit.
Motion by Danny? Second by Randy, in a discussion? All in favor?
All right. All right, the next item is to acknowledge and record in the board minutes, the monthly quotations for asphalt and grout for December twenty three, and authorize the use of the second, third quotation as lowest in instances where the lack of that will be from the primary bidder. And then also the M A S County Employee Scholarship Application, reminder that we have two scholarships available to Simpson County employees, or their kids for scholarships, we have that each year.
Basically, we didn't tell nobody.
We told them, nobody applied, we gave one of them away, I think, but not too much.
You did that across the road, it's probably a thing that can let them.
We've put it in their, we've also put it in their paper on the page, we've, we've done that, I'm just.
We run it on off site as well.
We're always in Foley, we get it back soon.
I just want to remind them.
I doubt we got more.
We don't want to feel bad.
Oh, we had a couple of them put in, it was late. Yeah, I did have two to put in that.
So if you approve those?
Motion by Danny? Second by Randy, in a discussion? All in favor? All right.
Number sixteen are reminders, the future board meetings for board supervisors, Friday, December fifteenth, and we have Friday, December twenty second, that'll be a recess meeting for the solid waste rates. Tuesday, January second will be the first meeting of the new term. Tuesday, January sixteenth will be our middle of the month meeting after the Martin Luther King Holiday, where we'll accept term supply and construction bids. Also, we have events upcoming, Tuesday and Wednesday, December fifth and sixth is the J M Wood Auction. Tuesday, December fifth is M A S M C New Term Orientation. Wednesday and Thursday, December sixth and seventh is Association Supervisors New Term Orientation. Wednesday, December sixth, also, Simpson General Hospitals have an open house at the Harrisville Mall, at, from four to six, so even if you're going to that orientation, you may be able to make that open house if you want to go. Thursday, December seventh, Park Commission Christmas Dinner, Eastern Fish House at six o'clock, and, and, and I'm sure we'll be through with the new term orientation, we ain't planning time for that. Tuesday, January sixteenth, Farm Bureau Legislative Breakfast at seven A M. at their office here in Minnehal. Thursday, December twenty eighth, is a swearing in ceremony for new county officials at ten A M. in the courthouse. Thursday, December twenty eighth, is a retirement party honoring Judge Ted Blakeney at six P. M. at Berry Seafood and McGee. And then Tuesday through Thursday, January twenty third through the twenty fifth and twenty fourth, the Mississippi Association Supervisors Midwinter Legislative and Educational Conference, held at the Refuge in Flowwood. We have upcoming holidays, Christmas, Monday and Tuesday, December twenty fifth, twenty sixth, New Year's, Monday, January first, and Martin Luther King Holiday, Monday, January fifteenth. That's all I have today.
Danny, what?
Let me probably avoid having an executive session, I need to bring you up to date on our Mississippi hub, negotiation.
Before we go into that, or.
I'll wait till after.
I just, I need to, you know, we have some, some discussion about solid waste, and you wanted to ask some questions, Tracy doesn't, she'll come in and talk in the board meeting, so she asks, could y'all come up with questions you want to answer, and she'll try to do a little research and find out the answers to what are the questions you might have about solid waste.
Be that now, or?
Well, if you, if you want to start doing that, and then give it to me, call me and let me know.
Okay, I guess, I guess.
Say, executive session?
Yes.
Anybody else have any comment?
When you get the program report for the month of October approved, and here's the report for November.
Say. Motion by Randy? Second by Danny, in a discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
We've got a, uh, Edgero Drummond that passed his probation period. We need to, uh, give him his little range and get him off probation.
Motion by Danny. Second by Randy, any discussion?
We got a, a new hire, a, uh, Jonathan Allbritton, just hiring him as a common laborer, you know? We need to make that hot.
Motion by Randy, second by Danny, any discussion?
We've got the, you know, that big pactor that we rented. I think the rent's up on it in a couple of days. We wanna turn that thing back in and just rent it next spring. But it's just, it's getting wet, and you're going into the holidays.
Probably be, but it's managed. You smashing on that return again?
No, but I needed action if you wanted to keep it.
I don't have a minute to keep it.
I, I unlocked you, I think.
If you backed up to one foot, then I'd do it anyway.
We backed, yeah, well, we still got a few roads that we wanna break up and pack down. But, um, like I said, it's, we may have to wait till springtime to do that.
Yeah, we'll, I'm afraid we get there for the holidays, and it's, well, not, we'll get that.
But we will look back at, at maybe re-lease it maybe April or May, or somewhere in there. So, unless y'all got some questions, that's all I got.
Thank you, Dan. Any public comment?
Yes, open, yes, sir. Uh, good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, we were request, uh, respectfully requesting board supervisors to hear and get understanding, because we understand we're not on... We understand we're not on today's agenda, but we got, got few questions, concerns, and some possibilities to request. Uh, in the area of, which is, was it Supervisor one? Yeah, we shared, which is, which is one. Uh, on Woodrow, on Woodrow Barnes, well, on Woodrow Barnes Road as well as off Woodrow Barnes Road and Barnes State Drive. Uh, there's an area coming in near Avery Lane, I think it is, uh, that the road is just, I, I don't know. It caused my daughter to bottom out her car when she came in with me, because she didn't understand that little barb and stuff was there.
Is it on Avery Drive, or?
No, it's on Woodrow Barnes.
Woodrow Barnes.
Woodrow Barnes, but Avery is like a little side, you know, you know it's right there, that area.
Uh-huh.
Uh, they're a little concerned also, Woodrow Barnes, and that dead curve, when it comes into Barnes State Drive, coming from the upper end of Woodrow Barnes back down to, it's coming from Jupiter back down. When you come there to make that turn in there, and it's, it's such a drop-off. I've been trying to get some concerns or, or questions answered about how we go about trying to get that addressed. Uh, 'cause I personally, I'm new to the area, and I don't have total understanding about policy decision, what I need to do, just like today, given the agenda and everything else. So, my main concern is just trying to get a lot of understanding. Because that area, you know, I, I came in one day, and I, when I turned in there, I almost lost control trying to get in there, because that thing dropped off and just took me on down. So, uh, I, I would like somebody to take a look there, if they would please. As well as, uh, I understand we're trying to petition to get Barnes State Drive turned into a county road, and there's some things that need to be addressed in the meanwhile, but with that being said, I, I, I'm, I guess I'm asking for the possibility of getting some rocks in there to make it a little bit more passable, because especially this time of year when it's wet, it's just, I gotta, I, his niece, I think, she can't even get out in there, I, I take my track control out a lot of times.
Just a private drive, right?
It is, it is. I, I understand, that's why I'm asking, you know, other than that, you know?
In, in some instances, you can. But, uh, like, uh, Mr. Wilson said, certainly, we say good morning to each of you, Vice President, Chairman, both of the other supervisors, just to kinda reiterate what, uh, Mr. Wilson has stated coming off five forty, uh, on the Woodrow Barnes Road, it's a, it's a bad spot. Again, if you're not familiar with it, there, there have been numerous accidents there, and now we have a compounded problem where the road is just soggy and a big hump, uh, there. And again, you're not familiar with it, whoever, we're familiar, we know we stop. Because if you don't, uh, then, when that person hits that spot, then you literally, high rate of speed, then they, they, you lose control, so, uh, that, that's a bad area. I have pictures, if you don't have time to come out, drive out and, and look at it, I can come show you. You will allow me to do so. And again, like Mr. Wilson stated, coming back to five forty from Jupiter End, in that curve, there have been numerous wrecks there. And now, with, uh, additional residents down, uh, Barnes State Drive, to make that turn there, you would, you're literally in the road, and if, again, somebody comes into the curve, you know, that's, that's a, another case for, for an accident. But we, we need, and Mr. Chairman, he, he's familiar with it, but we're here this morning just to try and see if the residents of District One on Woodrow Barnes Road can get some assistance, uh, in those two areas. Yeah, my name is Kenneth Schiffer, and I live on that road, on Woodrow Barnes Road, and I have property on Barnes State Road, so, uh, again, I can show you pictures of, if you'd like to look at it.
Yeah, but I, I wanna mention something else, though, which is, uh, you know, I ride a motorcycle, and I try to be as careful as I can, I pray every time I go out, I don't get in an accident. And when I came back from Jupiter back down, and I turned in there, and I thought I was going out through the woods. I said, I got all the way home, and I'm, I'm losing control, this thing, you know? Took all I could to keep it up to try to make the turn and go down in there, yeah.
What was your name, Tony?
Anthony Wilson.
And this way from Avery Drive, or?
Right at Avery.
In that area, Ben, Ben, in, in that area, we have been, some work on here, on, uh, Woodrow Barnes, coming over the hill, I just think we dug it out before, we feel a little again, probably lucky, don't win out a little bit. Can I put you down on this nearby?
That's on, that Barnes State, that curve, where you have to make a right turn, you're in a curve. And just a private drive.
Because we have had, just recently, had somebody come in and take out the trash cans and sign and everything else. It went to the, it went to the, uh, trees. But also, you know, as I said, I'm, I'm asking, because even if the rocks get out there, I have a tractor front load, I could actually spread it, try to make it pass, more passable to get to my house, I just, I've just, just moved in there.
So, Wilson, we got a, our, my clerk, we've got a phone number, eight-four-seven-seven-oh-oh-one. Or you can call, a lot of times they'll call us rules, call up here, and they'll give us the complaint or the problems, and then she'll make out a worker on it. We'll come out and address it, and, and most of the time, we'll take care of it.
Okay.
But, you know, um, we got bad roads all over the county, and we, we try to get these spots as bad, but, you know, I hadn't heard of these.
Right, and what's your name, sir?
Ben Warren.
Yeah, nice to meet you, Mr. Warren. Uh, like, as I'm saying, I'm asking for understanding in people and places and faces.
Normally, you call her, and she'll make a worker out, and we'll go address it and give some crews and, and get it took care of, if we can.
What's her name?
Uh, Teresa Brewer is our clerk.
Okay. All right, uh, we greatly appreciate your time.
You can, you can stop by, I think you stopped by, you know, the Barnes, that, and the Barnes?
No.
You know, you can move, uh, hours, say, hours in.
Yeah, across the highway.
Straight across the highway. You'll recognize me.
Okay, okay. But as I said, we, we appreciate the time and any assistance, we greatly appreciate.
Yeah, the name was, the clerk?
No, that's it, uh, except for the curve, um, not the, uh, right there at the intersection of Barnes Estates.
Yeah. Well, you know, we, we've done a lot of work there, and I think it's a whole lot better than it was.
It is, it is. Just, uh, right there, like you said, when you're making the right turn, uh, to get on Barnes Estates, that's at the edge of the road, uh, Woodrow Barnes, if we can deal with that.
Mr. Gordon, would you be willing to come out, maybe sometime and?
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. Just, um, call that oh-seven-one-hundred number and, um, just line it up, I'll make way during any time.
I think so.
And let me say on the fact, uh, some of the formers are already aware of this, am I right, Mr. Wilson?
Right.
We had Mr. Coleman out there, we had Mr. Coleman out there, and I'm thanking Mr. Ward, and, uh, addressed some of the best that we could for what we had.
Right, we really appreciate that.
We are aware of the situation, but you'd like to own a private drive and just do so much, but in that curve, you're gonna have to, you know? Deal with the situation.
That's some old bad dirt up in that area, some old white clay that I call it, it'll mushroom out on you.
Yeah.
And, um, that whole area is full of that tight soil.
That's what I was asking, is possibly if it's a rock, so I can get it spread it, that'll help pass, make it passable.
Anybody else?
We'll give the road to you, Barnes Estates, I mean, you, you can have it.
I understand we gotta do some things, but, you know, meanwhile, that'd help us a little bit, yeah. Oh, yeah. It's in the works, uh, it's, yeah, it has been turned on, paperwork is being did, uh, on outside, and got the outside, and say, you know, just meet somewhere in the building, we cannot go on a private drive.
I understand, you can have it. You can have a room.
I appreciate that, you said.
That's why I said, just give me some of the work, we have a lot of work.
But we are concerned, we see you and we hear you, and we are concerned, most definitely are. But like I said, we can just do so much, uh, and a unit system, it is a unit system, okay? All right. We say?